One, I'll call the note that we do have a form and I'll call the July, June the 12th, 2018 Board of Supervisors meeting to order. We have our invocation first. We have Pastor Matt Temple from All Nations Church do our invocation. Would everyone please stand and remain standing for our pledge.
Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for giving us an opportunity to be here, to speak our voices, to listen to plans that are up and coming. And, Lord, for this Board of Supervisors, they certainly have a difficult task. Lord, I pray most of all that you would give them wisdom and direction, or that your, ultimately, your plans can be accomplished. And, God, with all of the, all of the voices that are coming really from every angle and every direction at this, this group of people, Lord, I pray that you would help their hearts and minds to stay strong and know that you will be accomplished. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, welcome, everyone. We'll go right into our agenda. We have our first public hearing on the VDOT six-year plan. I'll read the public notice. The Virginia Department of Transportation and the Board of Supervisors of West County, in accordance with Section 33.1-70.01 of the Code of Virginia, will conduct a joint public hearing in the boardroom of the West County Administration Building, 340 South Sixth Street, Wiffle, Virginia, 24382, at 7:05 PM on June the 12th, 2018. The purpose of the public hearing is to receive public comments on the proposed secondary six-year plan for fiscal year years 2018/19 through 2023/24 in West, in West County and on the secondary system construction budget for fiscal year 2018, 2019. Copies of the proposed plan will, and budget, may be reviewed at the Wiffle Regency Office of the Virginia Department of Transportation located at 2843 Chapman Road, Wiffle, Virginia, 24382, or at the West County Office located at 340 South Sixth Street, Wiffle, Virginia. All projects in the secondary six-year plan that are eligible for federal funds will be included in the statewide transportation improvement program, which documents how Virginia will oblige federal transportation funds. Person requiring special assistance to attend and participate in this hearing should contact the Virginia Department of Transportation at 276-228-2154. Persons wishing to speak at the public hearing should contact the West County Board of Supervisors at 276-223-4500. And I'll open the public hearing. I have Mr. Russell. Come on up from VDOT.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Russell.
Would you like to, Mr. Chairman, would you like for me to go over the projects that are currently on the plan?
Yes.
Currently on the six-year plan, we have two sections on Sharon's Drive. We have two sections on New Bethel Road. We have Crawford Road. We have a Nixon Road. We have Pump Hollow Road, a section of Miller's Creek Road, Major Graham Road, Mount Erie Road, Wilkins Lane, Pope Road, Back Road, Glade, Goldian Fork, Hogback, Jonas Road, King's Chapel, Miller's Creek, Walters Road, Walton Furnace. And those are the projects that are on the current six-year plan. Last year's six-year plan totaled $3,399,000. This year's plan includes $3,508,000, so we do have more money. It's always a good, good sign to see the money increasing instead of going the other way. So, we, we are being projected to have more money through the next six years than we did last year. So, I guess what we're looking for is public input as, as well as the, the board's input as to what roads we need to add in this year's secondary six-year plan.
Mr. Russell, will you hear anything on Pump Hollow Road about the recreational access funding?
We, we received the resolution today, the corrected resolution. We had, we'd sent it off. They wanted it reworded from central office, and we got that corrected form today. We'll submit it and see if it gets approved or not. There is a, there is a section of Major Graham that's on here that we have applied for high-volume unpaved road funding, and I do anticipate that, that receiving funding, as, as we did last year, and if that's, if that goes, if that goes through, that will save $500,000, basically, that can be allocated towards other projects to put on the plan. And likewise, the Pump Hollow, if it does receive the recreational access funding, the Pump Hollow project money can be allocated towards other projects, so. What we're, what we need, and the reason for the public hearing is to take public comment on, on what the public would like to see added to the six-year plan, as well as the board. So, if you have any more questions for me, and if not, we'll...
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Russell. Okay, we'll now open up for public comment. Ms. Ryan will call your name. You have, individuals have five minutes to speak. If you're speaking for a group, you have 10 minutes. So, we'll get started.
Okay. Tonight's, let's see, the first one on the list this evening is Mark. I'm sorry, you'll have to help me out with this last name.
Cantor Missa.
Cantor Missa.
Good evening. We've been having a situation, I live on, I live at 570 Skewanda Springs Road in Rural I've only lived there for a couple of years, but I've been taking note of the amount of work being done by VDOT over that period of time in terms of road maintenance. And also, things that I've seen that I believe that we, as a community and as taxpayer, we'd be much better off pursuing having the road paved rather than trying to maintain a gravel or, you know, crush or run type road. Not only do we have some drainage issues on the road that increase the amount of work that needs to be done, but also there's a lot of, you know, in the summertime, there's a lot of dust on the road. We have quite a few farms on the road. We have livestock in the area. And I know that I can't, it's very hard for me to drive behind another car if I'm going down that road and just even be able to see in front of me with all the dust that comes up. And, you know, VDOT's been, been pretty good about trying to put down dust preventative, but, you know, we've all got to breathe it, the animals, the humans, and like I says, it just adds to the amount of maintenance that needs to be done. I do recall the, VDOT is up there at least a half a dozen times a year putting down more crusher run, talking about truckloads to try to maintain the road, you know, take, deal with the potholes and such. And between the amount of time that's spent with manpower and material, I think if you took a, a look at a 10-year period, which is normally 10 to 15 years is what you would get out of a paved road, and looked at the amount of monies that's spent on maintenance with material and manpower and such, you'd probably come to the conclusion that we're spending a whole lot more on maintenance than we would if we had just done the work and, you know, hopefully get the road on the six-year plan to have it paved. At that time, we could deal with the drainage issues, which aren't that, it's not that big a deal. There's not a lot of drainage issues, but there are a couple places on the road that really need to be attended to. Like I says, I think it would be in the taxpayer's best interest and also the residents on the, on the road to try to get this, this road put on the six-year plan for a paving. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Excuse me, what's the distance of the road?
About a mile.
Just about, just a fraction over a mile. I mean, just not even a tenth of it.
It's on your back page.
I'm not sure exactly the...
I think it's about a half mile.
1.1.
Yeah, 1.1. Mr. Russell, would it, do you know if it qualifies for rural rustic?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the list, we have Mr. Larry Sibbs.
Who's he? Of course, we...
This is a new thing for me. It's not new. I've, I've tried in the past to get help with the road we're on when Mr. Ralph Cottenheber was our supervisor. He made statements to me and to Gerald both that we know now just weren't true. And, you know, that's, that's gone in the past. I live on 181 Earl's Road, Rural Retreat. It's a dead-end road. I don't know the distance. I know it couldn't be much over a half a mile. And the 17 families, we have real, real bad drainage problems on it. Personally, when I was physically able, I must have scooped, you know, well into the hundred, the hundreds of loads of, of gravel. And I, I would just dump it along the edge of the road, and the grader would come along and, and respread it. But as, as my health started to break more, I was, I wasn't physically able to do that. So, I changed the curvature of the pipe, and it's just washing it down on, on people below Gerald and Keith Matisse lives across the road from me. We, we need a culvert that, right now, the ditch where I live, the, the culvert that takes the water, that was there before, the culvert that, that has rusted out, the engineer that put the culvert that's rusted out has, has passed away. He, he worked under Mr. Cottenheber, and I understand he died of cancer several years ago. But that pipe has rusted out and, and it has washed probably six inches, you know, lower than the pipe now. And then the, the end of the pipe on, on Keith's side of the road has collapsed. I mean, it's broke off. And the section of the concrete on that side of the road has broke off. And we, we really need help with it, and that's all I know to say. I don't, you know, I just need to, I just need some people, you know, I, I think everybody here is serious about what they're doing. And that, that's all we ask is, you know, is for somebody to really, really understand the problem we have and care about.
What was the name of the road I didn't catch?
It's Earl's, Earl's Road. It's a, I think it's a 511, and a state route is something, it's 11 is the last two numbers. I'm not sure about the first one.
Tom Page 5.
Earl's, yeah.
Next to the last.
Yeah. Yeah, that was the, that was a 911 name that they gave it. But it was state route 611 or something like that before that. And then when the 911 thing came, they gave it Earl's because Fred and, and his dad, I can't remember his name, they've both been dead several years now. I guess that's the reason they named it that. But we, we do need help with it. Thank you for the time. Thank you for the privilege to talk. And Gerald has taken some pictures of, of the situation that we have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Gerald Dorsey.
Thank you very much for letting me speak. Between Mark and Larry, they've, they've said it all, other than I've fallen so much on that road, between the potholes, slipping on the gravel, just going to a neighbor's house. We've had a neighbor up the road got severely hurt, and now she's forced to, where she's got to go to Maryland to live with family because they don't want her around that road anymore. And like Larry said, we, we were told we were on a 15-year thing already, and we just let it go and kept asking, every time we seen it, is it time for us? And they kept saying, no, not yet. And we kept thinking we were on the list. I called Rural Retreat and found out we were part of Wiffle, and here I thought we were in the town. And so, we're just trying to get that road fixed and we can get up and down it right. But it would save a lot of money to have it paved. And I thank you very much for listening to me. Oh, if you'd like to see pictures of the road, I can give you my camcorder. I went over and I took it, and it's got big gashes where, and it, and it's running across, and that's just from the rain. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Gary Delby.
How you doing?
Just checking, are you here to speak on the six-year plan or are you here to speak on your...
No, I put application in to vacate right of way.
Okay. We'll take care of that next.
I'm sorry, I didn't have you sign the right... Too long with that, I appreciate it. Get a road, you're one of them.
Okay. We'll move on to Kathy Akers.
I just have a couple things on, let's go on to Springs Road. I too, like the gentleman back here, we already thought we were on the six-year plan. I went, talked to a bunch of people several, several years ago. It's probably about two, year 2000 when I did this. And, you know, it kind of just, yes, you know, we're going to get you on that, and that was about it. So, anyway, here we are again today, and it's 2018, and now we're going through the channels that I know now to go through instead of believing someone else that's in higher authority. Anyway, like they were saying on the cost effectiveness, they're there all the time, having to do potholes and gravels and all this, that and the other. And one thing is, there at our spring is the headwaters to Holston River. You know, I don't know what the dust is doing to that, but that may be an avenue for money cleaning up the Holston River. You know, I don't know what all the chemicals that you spray on that road for the dust is doing to the river. They may have some money in there or something like that. I do not know. Also, the health issues of all the dust. My husband is a double lung transplant patient. He is almost four years out, and I don't know what the dust is doing to him also. So, it's very serious for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We have Sam Akers.
She's hit it off.
Is that normally how it works?
It's good enough.
That's all we have on tonight's list.
That's all we have, is signing up with emails, like to speak on any, any road issues, six-year plan. Well, thank everyone for coming. We'll close the public hearing. We'll take in consideration of your, of your request and see how we can add it to the six-year plan. Mr. Russell, you have...
I signed up, but I guess speak for the road.
Well, you signed up for citizens' time, but Mr. Cox, if you want to go on up and speak for Pope Road, come on up.
Ain't much I can say that's already been said, but it sounds like we're not the only ones that got road problems, and dust and mud and washboard. But what I'd like to ask you guys to do is try to move Pope Road up a little bit because it's been on that six-year plan way too long to get it. And on top of that, the bridge is gone, so puts another seven-mile round trip in and out every day. So, it's only less than two miles to join blacktop to blacktop on both ends. So, Mr. Horny, you did get some gravel and scrape it. Appreciate that.
I know that I had a whole lot to do with it. I think that was just normal management.
Oh, I seen you writing that down. And Jeff, anything you can do for us, buddy? Appreciate it. We have been on that six-year plan a while. Of course, it sounded like we ain't the only ones that got trouble. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cox.
Can we ask you up a question?
Yes. Mr. Russell, the board has a few questions.
I thought I was getting ready to head to the house.
Jeff, thanks for the effort, son. Rems Ford Road comes through with a high occupancy grant. Will that move that money into the six-year plan? Or will it mean you're going to add more to the end of the six-year plan?
Right now, the Major Graham, the one, we have, we have the remainder of Major Graham roads currently on our six-year plan. However, there has been no money programmed towards it yet, if that makes sense. That's, that's in and out year, so...
That wasn't what I was hoping.
I'm getting there.
Okay.
If we do get the high-volume money, that's money that, instead of, in lieu of programming it, when its time comes on Major Grahams, it will go to the, it'll go to the next route, the next priority. So, in essence, to answer your question, instead of spending $500,000 out of the six-year money of the county, that $500,000 can go to the next project. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. My question was, is that a local decision that the board can have some input in? Like if we wanted to ask you if that money occurs and the other money is there because the high-volume money replaced it, can, can we elevate the Pope Road project or ask you to?
You can, irregardless, you all can prioritize any route you want to, so...
Well, this is a maintenance engineering...
That money, that money, Major Grahams, the next project after it is Mount Erie, Wilkins, so on down the line. And that's the way the money will fall. We go in priority order. Now, if the board wants to reprioritize projects, you know, we, that's something we can do, but that's a decision you'll have to make. So, you would essentially be putting Pope Road in front of other roads.
The next two roads on them, Mr. Haley, are Mount Erie Road, Wilkins Lane, and then Pope Road.
But have y'all had a running estimate of what that two miles of drainage across that ridge, roughly, what you're going to cost, in your opinion, to fix Pope Road?
To complete the road, to where, from, from the paved section to paved, to get all of it paved, my rough estimate is $520,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else have any question for Mr. Russell?
If you get the, if you get the high-volume funding for Mount Erie or for Major Grahams, will that essentially move every road on the six-year plan up if we don't change the order?
No. No. Let me look at last year's plan. From last year's plan, yes, it probably will. Because last year's plan had Major Grahams in at $544,000. The funding was to be received this year and next year. So, if it does get the high volume, we can take it out and it will move other roads forward, according to last year's plan. And essentially, that's going to help Pope Road, that's going to help everything that's behind it.
Move them forward on the calendar.
Right. And the same thing with Pump Hollow, if we get the recreational access fund.
Thank you.
Mr. Russell, is there, is there any other situation in your district like Pope Road where it's paved on both ends and not paved in the middle?
I'm certain there probably is. And we're going to have it too on New Bethel.
I was going to say New Bethel.
New Bethel's one we're doing both ends, and that's simply because the sections in the middle are not rural rusticly, can't be done rural rusticly. Now, that being said, and I know we focus on rural rustic principles, any, any road, any project you all want to do can be added to the plan. The difference is, if we can do it under the rural rustic concept, you're looking at $200,000 per mile. Whereas if we, if we put it out to bid, if we can't do it as a rural rustic, it has to go to contract. You have preliminary engineering, you have to acquire right of way, you have construction plans, all the environmental reviews. You're looking at $2 million a mile plus.
Grace, you create's a good example. You can't do it without...
We could add it to the plan, but your money is going, you know, at $2 million to $3 million per mile versus $200,000. It's just, it's a, a big difference in the cost.
But the roads they spoke on tonight, Earl's and Skewanda, they're both rural rustic.
Earl, Skewanda, every road that was mentioned here tonight is rural rusticly eligible.
On Earl's Road, can you take a, have somebody take a look at that drainage and the pipe and at least get it, it fixed?
We, we can look at, see what it needs.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Russell.
Thank you.
Can I, can I say something?
Yes.
If you did look at that code, that thing needs to be lowered because the ditch right now, the ditch is at least 30 inches lower than the code is. The pipe that the engineer put in, and I talked about passing away, that's the only thing that's taking the water right now, and it's rusting through, and, and, I mean, it's washing the road. It really needs to be, there's not so much water now because, you know, it's dry. But when, when that's watered out, it's, it's a problem. It's about ruining our house. It needs to be lowered to the point that it will pull that water out of there. Right now, I mean, the road's just a dam if you told them that. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Russell said that he would have somebody up there and they would look at that and see what they could do. Mr. Burr, when do we have to have this end?
Well, what you've got before you there is the road that you all have previously looked at, and Mr. Russell had added to our plan for consideration. Fortunately, all the roads that were discussed tonight are roads that are added to the plan. If you have closed the public hearing, if you would like, you can go ahead and take action tonight to adopt this as a six-year plan. Otherwise, we would have to do it at our next meeting. It has to be done before the end of June, correct? And reference will be for actions tonight if you all so choose.
Okay. So, we can do it now, entertain a motion to approve the six-year road plan?
Mr. Chairman, I make that motion if we approve the six-year plan as discussed. Second.
Have a motion as second. Any questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I just might mention for the audience, that does include Earl's Road and... Road and Squawanda Springs Road on the six-year plan, so you all are aware of that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Here none, we'll do a roll call, roll call vote. Mr. Ball? Aye. Aye. All right. The chair votes aye. Okay, we'll move on into our second public hearing. In accordance with Section 15.2-2006 of the Code of Virginia and amendments thereto, the West County Board of Supervisors will conduct a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance for vacation of a right-of-way or street entitled, an ordinance discontinuing and vacating public right-of-way located between lots 74-3-11 and 12 and 74-3-17 and 18, 18A near Austinville Road and the Lead Mines Municipal District in West County. The Board of Supervisors will hear comments from citizens concerning the adoption of the proposed ordinance. The public hearing will be held on Tuesday, June 12, 2018, at 7:05 p.m. in the boardroom of the West County Office Building, 340 South Sixth Street, Westfield, Virginia. A copy of their proposed ordinance is on file in the West County Administration office located at 340 South Sixth Street, Westfield, Virginia, or online at www.westco.org for the public to review. My orders are the West County Board of Supervisors, Stephen Barr, County Administrator. Mr. Burr, you want to--
Mr. Chairman, as well, I will open it up for discussion, and I will refer you to page 11 of your agenda. That shows the picture of it the best, it shows the area highlighted in yellow that has been requested at the end of the driveway to vacate. Gary Delby and Julie White, who were here with us, are requesting this vacation, and as you see, they own land on both sides of this. The only other land that touches this is land owned to the east of it by the Roses there, but the Roses signed the letter of request to, requested the vacation of this due to have been previously established as a right-of-way. We have to go through this exercise of an ordinance to vacate the right-of-way. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have about it.
Does any board member have any question for Mr. Burr before we start?
Yeah, is it a consolidation just to clean up the property?
Mr. Delby, come on up.
We own the property around it, just purchased it last year, and the people that own it for us didn't realize there was a right-of-way there, and there's actually, our septic is in the middle of the right-of-way. And the right-of-way hasn't been used in the neighbor's say 20 years or better, so I'm just concerned that down the road, someone decides to use it, my septic's set right in the middle of it, so.
My question, and we just had one of these a couple of years ago that sort of backfired. There's no one else impacted?
No.
There's nobody up the road from you?
No, sir.
It's a deeded right-of-way, Stephen, in any way?
The only, only person that, that the other property touches is Virginia and Michael Rose, and they, they signed to agree there.
But they have other access?
Yes.
They brought Austinville over--
Yes, and they have a right-of-way that comes in another direction to their property, and they have one in French.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just one little property that touches, like Jeffrey's-- Jeffrey's Delby does not touch it, the Delby's, the part they purchased had a little strip that the previous owner had--
That they didn't even know was there, and so they, the population kind of separated it from the right-of-way.
Is anybody else like to speak on the public hearing for the vacation of the right-of-way? Here none, I'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend the adoption of ordinance number-- well, I shouldn't insert the ordinance number, the ordinance vacated up on the right-of-way between the lots that you so mentioned. I would make that motion.
I have a second.
Second.
Have a motion in second. Any questions or comments? Will we vote? Here none, we'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Horny? Aye. Aye. The chair votes aye. Motion so passes. Okay, next item is citizens' time. Ms. Myers?
Yeah, just me.
Before you get started, I want to ask you a question. Where you been?
Where have I been? I have been at the polls all day.
No, I'm talking about the last month or so.
Oh, I, I had to be out of town.
Go off and don't tell us why.
I know, I'm sorry. I had to be out of town. I was going to, but I didn't let you guys know. And nothing pressing, except I went, I did go through the budget. So anyway, to start out, this is odd, but I'd like to thank you guys for helping us get NVDOT, for putting up the signs in Cripple Creek and on Brush Creek Road. They're well-received, and they're very appreciated. We appreciate their installation for public awareness and safety of the equine community and people using the trail, so that was really nice of them. Okay, I went through the budget, and I was curious, a joint IDA budget again for 2018 How about a public presentation so people know what they get for this? We very rarely see anything that the joint IDA does for us, and we still have property for sale at Progress Park and so on and so forth. It would be nice if we saw something for our 250 grand. Okay. And then I was at the polls for 10 hours today. It was like sitting in a porta potty in front of the firehouse with the smell from the feedlot. It is absolutely outrageous, and it's not just today, it's ongoing, it's been going ongoing for several years, it's getting worse. The manure up there is this high, there's urine has to be every place, the smell is just whatever, and everybody that came to the firehouse to vote today made mention of it. Can we, again, can you guys, again, and on a monthly basis, call DEQ and get them out there? It's a nuisance for everybody, and why should the public individually have to make nuisance complaints through the court system? Why can't we do it as a county? If you've got a noise ordinance, you've got ordinance for all kinds of stuff, the Thistle Law and everything else, why can't we do something about the hamlet of Speedway? Nobody wants to buy, if there's something for sale, you wouldn't want to. There's no realtor that would even come close to showing one of those houses in the hamlet of Speedway because of the odor. And it's a continuing every day, depending, and it's not just the weather, it's just absolutely awful, so please--
Well, it's a state issue, I don't think we can--
Well, call North or Ma-- we don't care who you contact, just do it and do it all the time. If you did it on a weekly basis and made a nuisance of yourselves, it might help.
We need to contact the county department of agriculture, some services like we did before.
I mean, we talked about last time the pipes coming down, the water, did DEQ ever come and check that?
We were told they were out there checking it today, I brought the video.
I, I worked a part Monday in Speedway, and when I left, I went across that hill. NVDOT did have a white, one of them four explorers that pulled into road there, which, like you say--
It's bad. Yes, it's very tough.
Them people in Ivan don't think that pig smell.
Oh, forget about it. Yeah, this is nothing compared to that. Absolutely nothing.
I don't know, I mean, there's times it smells like pigs, and I ain't figured that out.
Well, we don't care what it smells like, we just, they don't want it, you know?
We'll make a request, and Mr. Ball, just contact the sources we've worked with before, just to make certain that they're still in compliance with state regulations there.
Well, they may be in compliance with the state regulations as far as what they're doing, but there must be something, spreading more lime, doing something. And then again, about the quantity of animals there, there's trucks continuously coming and going, there's cattle and baby cows, everything, everywhere. And it's not just that they're roaming the hills, they're not, they're saturated in small areas, and that's what's causing the problem. So come down and have a sniff, and then bring your gas mask, it's absolutely horrible, and it's really a shame. And truthfully, I mean, the property values there in the hamlet, you might as well forget about it. They really don't deserve to be taxed because it's awful, absolutely awful, and their places have no value. Nobody was going to buy anything there or live there, or any business coming or whatever. Okay?
We'll get with DEQ and them and see what they can do. Okay, does anybody else like to talk during citizens' time? Everybody's left.
Oh, wait for the one page, excuse me. On the website, you have the budget is out there, but there's no West County's salary schedule, and since the, the state has now passed the budget and so on and so forth, people would like to see that. Employee salary schedule posted on the website.
Here nobody else will close citizens' time, go on to payment of invoices, entertain a motion to pay the invoices.
I make a motion to pay the invoices.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in second to pay the invoices. Is any invoice, any board member would like to discuss or pull out? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Ball? Aye. Aye. All right. The chair votes aye. Next item is the approval of the meeting made the 22nd and 23rd minutes. Entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Have a motion in a second. Any correction or changes need to be made to the minutes? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horny? Aye. Aye. The chair votes aye. Moving into old business fiscal year 2019 budget and calendar year 2018 tax levy. Mr. Burr?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the, as, as Myers previously indicated, as you are all aware, the state did adopt a budget there last week, so we are in the process of getting all of the numbers updated to have actual numbers to go into budget for the state for the school system and all of those things. I had talked about bringing everything to you all at this meeting for adoption. Mr. Hale mentioned some concerns of waiting until the end of the month and trying to do everything, so now that the budget's been adopted, that is what we are doing. There's a couple of items just to go over with you all. We will make a couple revisions in the budget. One is the deduction of the Progress Park loan, depending upon our closing prior to 6/29, and get all that paperwork closed out, that will remove that $8 million off of that because it's been a refinance on that. As all of you all know, the school construction bids came in much lower than anticipated. We had $5 million in the budget for school construction, and they have requested 2.25 million in school construction to do the job, so with no objections from you all, I will go ahead and deduct it with the $5 million down to 2.25 million. We will show that as, we'll decrease our loan amount to that amount. If we're able to get some more funds from the literary loan, that'll just help us out and decrease that amount, but it'll be budgeted to have that 2.25 billion in there. You all getting ready to take some action in the future here on Buildings and Grounds Report for repair work for the Circuit Court building, and that is going to come up more so than what we currently have budgeted for that work, so I will request adding an additional $40,000 in the next year's budget for that work, if Buildings and Grounds has a recommendation of rewarding that. The actual school budget numbers will be inserted as of this afternoon. We have all numbers in, except there was one outstanding item that Mr. Grant and Dr. Poole from the school system were trying to get straightened out, make certain it's in there correctly. The county is remaining, we're at the flat funding, no increases, no changes there, we're at the, that flat funding level on here. Mr. Hale mentioned carryovers. A lot of the capital improvement projects will be carried over, but we will have full knowledge by the end of, by the end of next week of all of our carryover projects and then what funds are being turned in, so we can have all those items for you on June 29 for consideration in our budget. Those are the primary items that I had to go over. There has been some discussion, I don't know if anyone wants to talk about it or not, with the $2.8 million that we are not having to borrow for the school system, a couple members have spoken to me about fire trucks, and do we want to put some money in there for fire trucks, looking at borrowing money or not? That's just for, I don't want to get into the details of the trucks and everything, but if we want to at least budget some money in there, we can, we can put it in there and put that we're borrowing that money, and then ultimately decide later if we want to do that.
Do we need to have a work session?
Once we have the numbers, I guess we can talk next Thursday, probably the school board thing, that if we, if we need to have a work session by--
Prior to that, following--
Before next Friday's meeting.
Is there going to be any language that we've discussed about looking at the thing again in September and making a payment and reduce the debt service?
Yeah, that, that is, that loan is already taken care of. Basically, yes, at any point in time, we can look at it and we can, there's no language in the budget that, because the budget's just a dollar figure. But in September, when we get that report, that's what we need to do, is look at it, whether it's budget committee for board recommendation, if we want to take some money and apply it towards paying down that loan.
I prefer reducing the amount of loan when you can and not paying the interest, so just so that's still on your mind.
Something that--
Go ahead.
Something that I'd like to keep in mind, since we've already allotted the extra, the additional $5 million for the school, it's great that it came in lower, but, you know, we proposed that to the public, and everyone was for it and in agreeance with the, for, you know, the proposed tax increase, so I would almost, I know we need the fire trucks, but I would almost rather that stay with the school system, you know, because, you know, if you're going to do it, do it right, and then we still have SCAR, spillers, so that's something I would like to look at.
And I would say, just keep in mind that the, the decrease, until we get the actual figures on the literary loan, is about a deduction of $150,000 in debt service, so just, we're making everyone realize that, remember the $10 million we borrowed last year, the $630-some thousand debt service just came available this year on that, so there's still a large debt service increase out there.
And we're still taking money out of the general fund to balance the budget.
And they're requesting the 12, 12.2 instead of 15?
Mr. Poole talked to me last night, and they said that would take care of everything that they wanted to add back in.
Did either of you mention that alternate bid of $75,000 saving? Did they put those operable windows back in?
They haven't included with the numbers I mentioned to them, the discussion of, you know, one operable window for the building, and all operable windows as an option. So that's an item that you all can talk about next Thursday with the school board in reviewing those lines.
Okay, and on borrowing the money, I wouldn't be opposed because interest rates are going up, but I am nervous and probably opposed to borrowing that money and the county not keep their hands on it. If we went to the full $15 million of indebtedness, I think if we turn it over, it'll probably be gone.
When we borrow, we need to state the reason in the bond document, so you can make it generic enough that it could go towards another school project, but it's very important that you, if you have, what project it's going to--
And can the county hold on to it until it's a reality?
And, and you don't really want to get into that situation with increasing bond rates of having to go through arbitration or something like that. You're, you're better to say, we're looking at borrowing $3 million more, $2.8 million more, let them work on another project, and then come back and do it in that manner, as opposed to trying to, to put it in the bank and hold on to it for a while.
What, what is the rate right now? Interest rate?
Generally, well, what we've been told is we get around 3.25 to 3.5. That would look at the $5 million, if $2 million's a little bit less, and I'm still-- looking at the $5 million. The $2 million's a little bit less, and I'm still saying somewhere in that range.
I think you really said 12.5.
Twelve point two five. But we weren't borrowing the $10. So, I'm looking at borrowing now. That rate's already set. I can't remember the number I'm talking about. 3.05, I believe, is what we borrowed the $10 million at. Borrowed additional 2.2. We've got estimates from three point, three and a quarter to three and a half percent.
Okay, thank you.
If, so you're saying that even with the, with the budget that the state passed, we're still looking at giving the school system same amount of money, but we've reduced the debt service because the bids come in low?
Yes. The estimated debt service that we've got is lower, would be lower because we would not be borrowing $5 million. We don't need to borrow $2.25.
With, and, you know, what, what Ms. Lawson said, you know, with the, with the tax increase, you know, I, I agree with what you said. We need to look at replacing some of these fire trucks. I don't never want to have to sit up here and start hiring paid firemen because we can't get volunteers.
If you don't mind, that's the reason I wanted to put it off until we knew all the numbers. Now, because of that saving, we can do those things and not increase the county's debt any, from what we said we were going to. I'm all for doing capital projects, but we've got to know how we're going to pay for them. And I think our revenues will be up this year. All indications that our sales tax and other revenue might inch up a little bit, but until you know what your costs are, I'm really not in favor of voting on anything. That's why I asked that we wait till we got all of our numbers before we approve the budget.
And I'd just put some numbers together for discussion. What was asked was about $1.2 million from the fire trucks, and there's been a lot of discussion, you know, was it a full $700,000 truck, what was needed and all that. But $1 million over 10 years is approximately $120,000 a year at three and a half percent interest rate. I'm anticipating the savings on our school construction on our loans to be somewhere between $125,000 and $150,000 on our, our savings, once we get the literary loan and everything straightened out. So, what Mr. Hale said is correct. The savings we're seeing on the school construction is debt service that could be applied towards another thing. I use 10 years. Last one, we financed over 15 years, but financing the fire truck over 15 years gets to be a little bit long.
Well, and, you know, I'm not in favor of borrowing a million dollars, because if we borrow a million dollars, they're going to spend a million dollars. But I'd like to cap it somewhere around eight, and then people can get real about what can do a good job and what.
You talking about $100,000 for both?
Yes, sir.
So, we're talking about Bearin Springs and?
Max Meadows.
It reduces three trucks and buy two.
Turn them and sell there to replace it with one, right?
Stephen, can we, can we address some of the vehicle problems that come up during the budget request? I know buildings and grounds, animal control. I mean, realistically, realistically, these guys are driving vehicles, got $190,000. I think we hit our return on investment on that.
Yeah, I would like, I can.
Get all of them numbers together and just look back in the request and see what vehicles was requested. And after the school board meeting, we'll reconvene down here and we'll go over the numbers. Stephen, is anything else on our old business?
No, sir.
Okay, new business building and grounds committee report?
Well, it means a building grounds on June 5. The bids were back, as Stephen mentioned. It is local contractor, so it's local money for the Circuit Court. Recommend accepting building ground bid, building and designs bid of $151,875, and Imperial Woodworks bid of $20,560 for Circuit Court renovation. And in addition, this, this job's been around for six years, and now we're getting it done, and it is money available from courthouse maintenance.
Well, we've been doing pieces of it. We've done three offices. Now, we're into the Circuit Court.
And it needs done.
Court room.
The buildings and design is done previous, well, done a lot of work in the county before, but they have done the work in the judges' chambers and everything. The judges, they're satisfied with their work, and I think they can work well with it.
And they were the parent low bidder.
Okay, come from committee. Doesn't need a second. Any more questions?
Did we ever get any information on the benches?
On Q?
Yes.
We are going to get, request the samples from them and get everything lined up so they can meet the timeframe attorney. But we haven't seen them yet.
Okay.
But approving the money, though, if they're not acceptable, you can work that out, correct?
Yes.
And is corrected they're going to start June, July the 1st?
That is the goal. Mr. Bowles has been in touch with them on lead times on all their items and everything. And once we have that information to the public judge and let them know. But they know that they can come in on July 1st and start tearing out some of the items there.
Okay.
Stephen, all the money and his building the ground. Push Mr. Bowles a little bit to get that material list ready for the rescue squad building.
It's, it's done. I've discussed it with him this afternoon. We've got a pile of it, and the only item he was working on, it wasn't certain who was going to, was going to, but was a, what type of HVAC, heat air conditioner, some either a split unit or just a wall mounted unit right there and coming out the back as the alternative. And that was the only item that was likely, but.
Well, the Realtor Club approved last night paying for the material, and the county courses are going to install it. So, and I'd recommend that those are manneled. We have a manneled dealer here in town. Those, I've got somebody over 20 years old, still doing a great job for the through wall units.
And I've, I've asked him to get a, a price for a contractor to help install it. Right now, these, the, you know, the three man maintenance crew we've got with all the molly and everything right now. I'm used to getting calls about models getting lost in the outfield at Agent Park, but they're joking that the poodles are getting lost at the dog shelter. I know we're getting behind all the molly, so we'll get the price from that. But it's just a very busy time for them to try to do construction, but I know the land mines need that done quickly. So, we'll get a price on that and see what.
Okay, well, let's take care of this recommendation from the Building and Grounds Committee. With no other comments, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horny?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes. Anything else from Building and Grounds Committee?
As soon as this time.
Okay, because we got the Cometh Attorney's letter from Mr. Maybe informing us that effective July the 1st, 2018, his position will be vacant. And we need to send the letter to, in effective July the 1st, Mr. David Salival will exhume his duties. Do we need to accept this?
Basically, just need to pass the resolution on page 86, acknowledging the resignation Gerald E. Maybe, and requesting the Circuit Court to order a special election. And the language in the attached order is for that special election to be during the next general election.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Ball?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes. Need to get this to the judge pretty quick.
Yeah, so, we got the letter last Thursday. I called Scott immediately and emailed to him and asked him if he could get this to us, because I didn't want to wait until the June 29 meeting to get that done. So, we'll get that executed, get signatures on it, and get that to the judge.
Okay, next item of the speaker, Phase 3, change order, tank aeration system.
Mr. Chairman, I'll keep this short, and I apologize to Mr. Horny already and called him. Typically, this would go to the Water Committee for a change order request. But due to the time and us not having a meeting until the last of the month, I told him I'd like to go ahead and put this on the agenda. If y'all remember, we bid out Speedway, Phase 1 and Phase 2, and Phase 3. We've had money left over all the time, and we've kept adding additional projects. This is the aeration system that was already bid in, in the documents. Bill can go through the long spreadsheet of everything with you with it, but basically, we're down to the point where we have grant funds remaining. This had a split between loan funds and grant funds. We've drawn down about 1.2 of the grant funds so far. We've got a couple other drawdowns to put in there. But there is enough money in grant funds to put this aeration system in at the tank. And the Health Department has recommended this as well, if we are having problems with water or the things up there. So, recommendation, not from committee, but from staff, is to accept this change order to provide the installation of the aeration system of the Grayson Road Tank.
Okay, recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I will make that as a motion.
Have a second.
Aye.
Have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion?
Let's clarify with Bill. Bill, that just keep water pressure in the tank?
No, sir, not, maybe in the latest term. This is for the disinfection byproducts problems that we have experienced along the radio tank and the Woodville West, Wood West system.
Because the water's not moving.
Right. And so, this will, it's the same system we got out there. It'll aerate the water and such, and it'll help with our chlorine residuals and the DVPs, so that we don't get notices of violation with the Health Department.
Okay.
Is this so they won't, so they won't have to flush out the hydrogen foam?
That, yeah, that's a solution. This will help prevent some happening to be done. It also allows us more flexibility with the wells at Speedway, with the age of those wells, and we're not kind of polluting some of the water and keep the things moving. So, we recommend it. It's a good system. We're using it on the radio tank now. It'll just put us on both sides of that system. Have the same capability for maintaining our water quality.
Okay, any more questions? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Ball?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I'll just mention also, I was very worried about Mr. Chris today. As you know, we are doing a pilot project at the Town of Woodfield's water treatment plant to help prevent the issues from the start, before it ever gets out into the distribution system. The town has been very gracious in working with us on that, and it can provide benefits then as well. Everything is completed, it's installed. They're working out some operational issues, and I would just start running this type of, this system in their future, which is perfect, because this needs to happen during the warm weather, which that's when we, when we've had the issues before. So, that's another thing. It's helping to resolve the problems and issues that have been before. But the last four samples have come back absolutely clear, so we are no longer in a violation notice out there in the process.
Okay. Before we go on closed session, we have a request to amend and appropriate $6,000 to 7110-461200, funds received from the Town of Royal Retreat for the Royal Retreat campground. Entertain a motion to amend and appropriate?
So moved.
To have a second?
Second.
Take their money. I said second, take their money.
Is any questions, comments? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horny?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes. Next item on the agenda is a closed meeting.
Mr. Chairman, before we go to closed meeting, let me just mention something else about the Town of Royal Retreat. They have spoken to Kevin recently, in addition to this, not here. They are looking at replacing some picnic tables at the Royal Retreat Community Center, and it offered us to take the good picnic tables that were there and take them out to Royal Retreat Lake, which we have a few places that could use some picnic tables on the trees where people walk the banks up there. So, Kevin will be sending an appreciation letter to the Town of Royal Retreat, hoping we'll be picking up a few tables, but just want to mention that.
Thank you. Okay. Next item, entertain a motion, go on closed session.
So moved.
To have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we're going into closed session under section 2.2-3711A1, discussion of personnel, and 2.2-3711A5, discussion of prospective industry and development. We are second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're out of closed session. Mr. West, you're going to read certification.
Whereas the Wood County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Wood County Board of Supervisors, that such a meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore be resolved that the Wood County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge. Only public business matters lawfully exempted from open, open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convened in the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Wood County Board of Supervisors.
Have a second on certifying the resolution.
Second.
Any question or discussion? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horny?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes. Mr. Burr, anything else to come forward to board tonight?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman, no call.
Well, here none, we'll recess until June the 21st at 5:00 PM with a joint meeting with the Wood County School Board. Jake will be here?
That'll be there.
There.
In that way, we have to go overlook anything on the project we can.
And then we'll move back here for budget discussions, a work session.
You still here, Martin?
So, we're in recess.